Council now returns from closed session. We will reconvene, and Madam Clerk may we have roll call. Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne? City Attorney, may we have a report on action taken during closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session tonight to discuss the one item on the agenda, which was an existing litigation matter, Joel Alcox versus the City of Lompoc. Staff gave a presentation to the council, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please join me in Pastor Darren Hunt's invocation for the evening and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we begin this first regular session of a brand-new year with prayer, asking you to lead our assembled leaders in this room as they meet to conduct the business of governing this great city of Lompoc. Thank you for bringing us all through this past year with its many ups and downs. 2019, too, will be full of ups and downs. Help these leaders to navigate the many challenges and transitions they will face in the coming months. You are a God who makes all things new. At the outset of a brand-new year with changes all around us, we thank you for being a constant in times of change. Lord, we thank you for our mayor and councilmembers here. We especially thank you for Gilda Cordova as she fills the vacancy we had on our City Council. I pray that you would guide her and give her strength of heart and will to determine to do her best for the citizens of this great city. Tonight, we not only pray for elected officials, but also for our fire and police departments. We especially pray for Officer Gabriel Molina, as he is introduced tonight. May you bless him, protect him, as he serves with the men and women of our Lompoc Police Department for the protection and safety of our city. We thank you for this rain we are enjoying, and although it is with guarded words, we say this, knowing the destruction that came just a year ago last week due to rain. We pray for protection of our neighbors to the south, as well as members of fire departments dispatched there to continue to keep safe. God bless our community and all that seek to do good to their neighbors in need. Let justice and mercy reign. Guide with your wisdom and your love, all of us now. Amen.
Please raise me in the pledge. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who tend to watch the meeting on the streaming version, unfortunately, tonight that is unavailable. We have had some server updates, and so there is no streaming. The meeting is absolutely being recorded and will be available on our website in the next 24 hours. You can still listen to the meeting on KPEG 100.9 or on Channel 23 of the local public broadcast. Just a reminder to those of you who don't attend regularly that pursuant to the state law, any member of the public may address City Council concerning any item on the agenda before or during council consideration of that item. Please be aware that these items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are normally enacted by one vote of City Council, and if you wish to speak on a consent calendar item, to do so during the first oral communications. I'd like to ask the members of the public to either silence or turn off any pagers, cellular phones, or other communication devices out of respect for the public. Before we begin our regular agenda, because the issue came up after the agenda had already been made public, I'm going to ask council to consider an item to be added to the council agenda. If we decide on it, it would be added as item number seven, the last item. We've had several requests, both from the public and other entities within the community regarding some form of assistance during the government shutdown to local federal employees. So I'm asking council, and it needs to be a two-thirds vote, that meaning at least four of us agree, to add the agenda item to potentially discuss what those opportunities are and if we would like to utilize those this evening. So if there is an interest to do that, we can add it to the agenda this evening as item number seven.
Mayor Osborne?
Yes.
Just to clarify for the record, I just wanted to state that the standard to add something to the agenda is that the need for the item arose after the agenda was posted and that there's a need for immediate action, and it does require a two-thirds vote. I think in this case, because the first paycheck that federal employees missed was on Friday after the agenda was posted, that we can meet that standard, but we still would need a two-thirds vote to add this item to the agenda.
Thank you for that clarification. So I'm happy to make that motion that we add the item for discussion to tonight's agenda and would look for support from three others. If you're in support or want to discuss?
I'll go ahead and second.
Do you have a full staff report prepared?
No, this was just discussed actually earlier today about the situation.
I'll go along with it.
So we need one more vote in support of that.
I'll go ahead.
Thank you. So we will add the item as number seven and discuss it later, and I thank the staff for considering it and being prepared to discuss it tonight and at least address any concerns for the community with potential solutions. So back to our regularly scheduled agenda, we will start tonight the presentation by Police Chief Pat Wash to introduce our newly sworn officer.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Officer Molina, you got to stand up here so we could stare at you. So as you know, I like to introduce the officers as we hire them, any employees, actually. I think it's important that the community knows who's working for them. The City Manager allowed me to hire Officer Gabriel Molina to replace an officer that's going to retire pretty soon. I've got a little bio here. Officer Molina was born and raised in Santa Barbara, California. After graduating high school, he attended Santa Barbara City College for three years. During college, Officer Molina met his fiancee Savannah during a study in a murder class. And I'm not making any comment of how that marriage is going to go. In April 2018, Lompoc Police Department hired Officer Molina. He attended the Allen Hancock Law Enforcement Academy here and graduated in Class 116, and he said he is honored to work for Lompoc Police Department, and we're just happy to have him. I'm not going to have him make any speeches. I just wanted to introduce him.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, that's it for us.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, Officer Molina. City Manager, a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually left my printout in the office, but from memory, we were discussing the goal-setting session for the council. The initial date was the first part of February. I think what we'd like to do is push that out to the weekend, the Saturday of March 9th. The reason for that is we'd like to put together a citizen survey. It's been done in the past in other places where we can come up with different thoughts and comments. The citizens can then also add any comments to it that might help guide the council in their either reaffirmation of the current goals, new goals, changes in goals. So we thought the March 9th would give us about a month worth of time for the public to actually give us their comments, and then we'll have that compiled for the council to review at the meeting. We'll probably try and hold that at the Dewey Center, but we'll get more information out there to the public on that one. I was just hoping to get a straw vote, if you will, if March 9th might work for everybody. It is a Saturday, and it would be similar to the others where it'd start about 8:30 to 9:00 would be the sort of coffee donut, and then 9:00 to at least 12:00 for the goal-setting session. Or anybody not, I should say, anybody not able to meet that time.
I'm fine.
Anyone else unavailable?
No. Okay.
So currently, it sounds like we're all available.
Another couple items, we have a number of staff. We have the fire, the police, planning, building, I think that was it, that are going to be sitting on a Chamber of Commerce panel discussing cannabis and more of an informational, educational forum, and that'll be on the 17th. It'll be, I believe, during lunch over at the Chambers Building, for those that are interested. We also, I'll be sitting on another panel that day myself. It's an economic panel through UCSB, the Economic Project portion they have down there. It's a number of different City Managers are sitting on there. We're going to be discussing where we see the economy going right now, and they haven't given us all the questions, but they want to get our input on what we see going forward. And lastly, is just the city offices will be closed this coming Monday in honor of the MLK Day, so I just want to make sure everyone remembers that.
The chamber event is actually at the Hilton.
Oh, it is at the Hilton. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for City Manager? Councilmember Vega?
Sir Trup, this is again back to February 9th for the goal-setting. It has nothing to do with the budget or anything like that. It's a separate meeting, right, that we have scheduled for the second?
Right. This is the one, so every two years, count, in this case, our council will look at what the goals were set up. They'll go back and then either reaffirm the goals, change the goals, you know, do something to them to look, and we do that every two years because that's when the new budget comes up. So not only do we have new members on the council, but we have a brand-new budget coming. So it's a way for the council to give direction to the staff as we start crafting the budget. So we have to figure out where we need to go.
So this is in conjunction with the budget, is that what we're saying? As an add-on?
It's one of the steps. So as the council comes forward, and if they were to say one of the number-one priorities is, you know, park improvements, then we as a staff will then try to do our best to fit that goal within what our budget constraints are.
It's a little bit early, but I'd like to also do an add-on here as far as budget, since we have a budget meeting scheduled for February 2nd, I believe. Is that correct?
No, that was, what we're changing is that the February 2nd was the goal-setting.
That's what I wanted to clarify for the public here, okay?
Yeah, so the 2nd of February was going to be this meeting, but we couldn't turn around a survey quickly enough and have enough time for the public to respond to it.
You know, I'd like to also make a council request that the publics is invited, but I'd like to make a special request that we get business owners and managers out there also in, as a special invitation, as part of the public, because I think their input is critical to us moving forward and seeing what their needs and wants are, so that we can make sure that we have their consensus on this also.
And we can work with the council and come up with a plan that might be the first half-hour to an hour, might be business owners discussing different topics, and then move into the citizens in general, and then move into what the council would like to do.
Is that something that you can take care of, sir, without us taking a vote or something? Because I'd like to make sure that we do that outreach.
Correct. We can do that. We're already working on this plan, so we'll come up with that. We'll add that to it, and then we'll get it out to the council.
Thanks for the clarification, okay?
Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. The public comment on consent calendar is a maximum of three minutes. There are three items on it. If there is something you would like to speak to regarding consent calendar, please step forward. Seeing no one rise, we will close. The consent calendars are considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown by prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Is there an item that council would like to either pull or have a question for staff regarding? Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, if somebody could just read in the recommendation for item number one. I mean, it is becoming routine, but I don't think it's necessarily that routine. Maybe if they could just read that recommendation in.
Given this is the declaration for continuing the local emergency proclamation, maybe the City Attorney would be the appropriate one to at least read it into.
Sure.
Record.
The recommendation from staff is to review, receive, recommend the City Council review, receive, and file the staff report regarding the need for continuing the local emergency proclaimed by the City Council on October 2nd, 2018 relating to the cleanup of the San Andres Riverbed.
Thank you. The only other item that might be of note to anyone who has looked at this is item number three, which is, got a note by it regarding the fact that council acts currently as a successor agency for the redevelopment funds, and this item is a report that we must file that has a deadline with the state and is just typically what we need to do. So that's why you see the note of successor agency next to it, is that the council also acts as that. So those are the only two real concerns on consent, but I see no reason to pull it. Any other questions or concerns? Then I will take a motion on consent. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar as written.
And a second?
I'll say it.
Councilmember Mosby seconds that. Everyone vote. And that passes 5-0, so consent calendar is approved. Now we'll move to staff presentations, announcements, and requests, and the first is the Management Services staff to provide an update on our financial systems upgrade.
Thank you. It always brings me great joy to talk about the improvements we're doing to our system. So just a little history, in 2017, in September, we went live with our financial statements. In October of 2018, we went live with our payroll system. So right now, we are working on our utility billing system. And with having such an old system, it's caused a great deal of work for our IT staff, and I can't say how great they've been trying to get this information together. But we're scheduled to have conversion passes to test it, and every time they do a conversion pass, it takes a lot of work for IT to get it into a form that MUNIS can handle. So right now, we're working on testing files for the meters, and we're working on the payments and collection system, how we're setting that up. And at the end of this week, we're also doing service orders. So those are very exciting that we're getting this act together, and in February, we'll be doing importing files for payment methods and meters, and we'll be testing how to, how the hand-read meter information can get into the system. February, we're also looking at the general billing. That's for billing for the solid waste, people go into landfill, and we'll have testing to make sure we can actually have, do the billing up there as well as in-house, which we don't have the capability right now. So what we're currently doing, someone generates a bill up at the solid waste plant, they take their name, their number, and get their information, and then the city goes and bills them. So we're working on getting that to be a little bit more automated, and we're expecting to go live at the end of February with the general billing. In March, we're going to actually get our Tyler cash sharing system going at the end of March, which means that for a while, we'll have two systems. When they take payments, we'll have the old system for utility billing and the new system for when they're paying their plans and other fees that they're paying for. Also in March, we're going to start working on the customer, it's called CSS, Customer Self-Service, so that when someone does get their bill, they can start looking online. The utility billing part of that won't go live until June, but we're hoping that at the end of May, June, we can get our utility billing process going. I'm very, very excited about that. It has taken us a little longer than we'd like to have it, but we're very excited about it going. When we finally do go live with our utility billing, you'll have the customers be able to start looking at their information online and pay online, and the systems will talk to each other, and that's the very exciting part, because right now, when we take revenues in, it might be a couple months before we actually get it on our books, and we want to make that a faster process. After we do our utility billing, we're hoping to start the work order conversion 90 days after we get our utility billing going. And a work order system's a little bit different because it's the system that electric uses for doing big projects or tree trimming or any kind of water projects that can do it through a work order system versus doing it on a spreadsheet on the side. So that's where we're at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck?
When's the whole thing going to be done?
Oh, you know, we knew it was going to take several years to get it done, but after we do the work order system, then we also have things like business licenses and the billing. It's an intergov program, so it's going to take about another year before we're done with it all. A year from June, I'll say, because I wish it was quicker, but unfortunately, because our system is so unique, it doesn't easily translate into the new system. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank everyone who's been working on it and doing such a diligent job of trying to get it right the first time. So thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Our next presentation is the planning staff to present dates for the council workshop on the 2030 general plan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In the past, there's been a desire to bring back the general plan and have a discussion as far as either potential amendments or improvements to our 2030 general plan. So what I did is I put together a few options that I actually handed out that you can take a look at to think about and provide some staff to, or provide direction to staff in regards to is there an option that you would prefer or another direction that you would like to go? And I'd like to just explain those options quickly. The first option would be to bring back a formal staff report, and that staff report, we could give some general plan background and ask which elements you'd like to focus on after giving a staff report. Also, look at budget constraints, because there would need to be environmental review, and there would need to be a budget that would be set for that item. The second option would be, as you know, we've been working on the zoning ordinance for quite a while. We started off with signs. We finished that, and we've been working on the zoning ordinance for about a year and a half. That goes to the February 19th planning or council meeting. It's been at Planning Commission, and you could wait to hear that item on February 19th. And a correction in the agenda this evening, it actually says the 5th, so it will not be on the 5th, it'll be on the 19th. After you hear it, you hear comments from the public, then it might be an option is to go to a workshop after that, after you've heard of the zoning ordinance and some of the issues that are going to be brought up. And I also wanted to say that just today, I gave our new councilmember, Cordova, a general plan and a draft zoning ordinance, so try to bring her up to speed to some of the projects the city's working on. The last option for your consideration is just go directly to a workshop. So we could do something where maybe around March, we could have the public invite them here into the council chambers. Staff would give just an overall brief presentation about the general plan and its purpose, and then that would be a time to get input, and then come back and report back to the council, and then the council could direct staff on how they want to proceed. So those are some options I just wanted to put on the table, and then I'd like to see maybe which option you would prefer, or if you have another avenue that you'd like to take. Staff's open to hearing that this evening.
Councilmember Vega?
Brian, you know, being that we can make amendments to the general plan up to four times a year, maybe a suggestion from you on how we could better schedule something like that, so that we're not just having one workshop or one meeting once a year when we have the option of having up to four, okay? So it sounds like maybe we could do a better job, maybe scheduling with you. Obviously, you've been busy with the zoning ordinance, so maybe we can get a little guidance from you, how we could better schedule this out. It doesn't answer your, the question you asked. Personally, for me, option one, to come back with a staff report focusing on the elements would be crucial since we're going through a budget sessions right now, so it seems like we should know the cost of where our changes would like to be, would be prudent before we go to a public workshop.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, being that the zoning ordinance has been almost 30 years since an update, the general plan just completed a couple of years ago after almost 30 years without an update. It would be good to have an approved zoning ordinance and an approved general plan at the same time, which would be obviously option two here. But at the same time, option one, I think with the staff report at a public hearing would be the main thing to do with it, and I don't know if we would be able to get anything happening in March, but then I don't want to go too far out where we start overlapping a general plan with budget discussions. So when do we want to start the budget discussions? Because I'd like to have this meeting prior to the budget discussions.
Sorry, if I may. The goal is to come back, and I'm looking at our new Management Services Director, but to start bringing forth to council more updates, and then possibly in April to have the actual discussion of here's what our numbers look like, because we're still putting together the numbers. We still have to have staff put in their budget, so we know where we're sitting with that. And so I'm thinking April is probably the first time we'll actually be able to come back to the council and say, here's our first pass at a budget.
Mr. Howverson, I guess the next question is, you know, being that you can update the general plan four times a year, that's done on a quarterly basis, not you do an update and then you get, three months later, you can do another one.
I believe that's actually just for the full year, so I could double-check. I don't think it's necessarily quarterly, it's just the year.
Four updates? Okay.
Four changes, yeah. So, you know, the four doesn't seem like a lot, but because we haven't had, we don't get a lot of requests for general plan amendments and zone changes, it actually has suited the city quite well. But for a city, for other cities where there's a lot of changes going on and more projects, more construction, then you well see more activity on the general plan, but that hasn't been a big issue, per se, as far as just limiting it to four a year. Now, for this year, the change that is going to occur, so I just started to butt in there, but as part of the zoning ordinance that you're going to see next month, we do have amendments to the general plan, because we're deleting some things, we're revising some things. It's not major, but there are quite a number of properties, for example, we're eliminating a general plan designation, the office commercial, so that will be one that will be taken up.
Councilmember Vega?
Councilmember Starbuck, I appreciate your comments there. I think the key word in option two is to wait. We're always waiting. So I think that, being that it is tied to the budget, I think that we should tie it to the budget, because there definitely is some budget issues that are tied to the general plan as far as the amendments and the elements that are included that need to be changed, because why would you adopt something when you could have something changed? So I have to agree that we should do it together, if not right before. It's a little bit short of timing, but we're going to be going through the budget, and if March or April works, that's fine. I think we need a little bit more guidance probably from you, Brian, is what I'm looking for, you know, to see how we can better schedule what we're doing, because there is a cost to anything that we do change-wise with environmental impact reports, and there is some costs that are inputted into the general plan that are pulled out of our budget because of the elements of the general plan that are already approved, and I think we should take a fresh look at that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a comment, say, I don't want to wait till April when we're in budget. I'd like to have this done, started before. I'm not going to speak for the council, but I think the changes that we're talking about are, after almost 30 years and we approve a general plan, it's a huge document. You go back and you review it now, you see little things that you say, why did we do that? You know, and this could be changed. This didn't work as well as we thought. So I think there's some verbiage in there. There's probably some, just grooming and massaging initially, so I don't see it as going in and doing huge changes as much as it is to just, let's go in and all of us look at it again. How many years has it been since we approved it? It's three, four years.
2014, 2015, so 2014.
Yeah, I mean, it hasn't been looked at by a council since then, so, and obviously, the zoning ordinance, we've been reviewing, but we haven't discussed it as a council either, so the two together...
We had one workshop, a joint workshop with Planning Commission City Council, but yeah, understandable.
So hearing the feed... So, hearing the feedback, I have a suggestion. I think it's really important that we go ahead and discuss the zoning ordinance update on February 19th, and see what those element changes are, the general plan elements changes are, because that does have an impact and would reduce some of the work potentially that we might notice. And so we'd know already what general plan updates need to be made based on the zoning update. And then potentially, maybe the first meeting in March, take option one to come back and have an update based on, we already know what's being changed as a result of the zoning ordinance, and now we can focus on those things that aren't being changed, and give us a little time to do the comparison. So I propose that it's a combination of option two coming first, followed by option one. Councilmember Vega.
I actually think that would be the best direction. I think that all of us who have a copy of the general plan should probably do our own little homework also to facilitate and help move forward a little bit faster, and that would help you instead of us starting from scratch. I think that if we have some sort of idea, we should understand the general plan if we're gonna bring it back to you, instead of coming over here and having some negative comments of what's this and what's that. I think we're all old enough and smart enough to go over here and do a little homework and do our highlights, and put some sticky notes in, and then ask the appropriate questions to facilitate the meeting in the shortest timeframe.
Now, if I could ask a question, what I'm seeing is, here are the zoning ordinance on February 19th, then I'll work with the city manager for a meeting in March to bring a staff report back. But in that staff report, if you could direct me as far as what elements, because there's a lot of elements, which elements you would like for me to highlight and kind of focus in on that staff report that we bring back to you? That would be very helpful, and it would kind of allow us to focus on what's the most important thing to the council.
So definitely, the budget constraints would be one for me, because I think hearing first and foremost what the constraints are to how often and what those costs are by the, having to redo EIRs and that sort of thing is really important. Then regarding elements, I think having knowledge from the February 19th of what specific elements are already being changed would impact what I personally would recommend for the second meeting. So I'm not sure I'm prepared to give you a list of what elements on top of those already being addressed by the zoning. So I'm looking to either the city manager or fellow council members to potentially suggest, either us submit to the city manager our concerns and which elements they are, and sort of bring it to a cohesive list for you, Brian, rather than it be some sort of consensus on dais, you know? Since this is just sort of a discussion to give you some direction to come back on. City manager, does that work for you?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. If you take the time, think about what you think is most important, send me your ideas. I will then get with Brian to craft the staff report on what elements might be pertinent.
Councilmember Vega.
Brian, I wanted to impress that we're here to work with you, and hopefully you can help us out here, okay? So it's not one of those things where we, I see everything as being negative. We're looking at positive moves, so that we can have some action items moving forward that will have a positive impact on our budget. And maybe it's something there that maybe we have people here. We've had a lot of staff changes here, we have council member changes, we have people that would like to move Lompoc forward, you know? Basically, the reason I made this comment about option two is the first word was wait. We're tired of waiting, okay? So basically, it's up to us to schedule it, so all of us professionally can probably put something on an agenda, you know, whether it's three, four months, or whatever it is. It's up to us to schedule properly, so I think that falls on us.
Agreed, agreed.
Looking for your help, okay?
And one thing, just to give you a heads up, since I've been working with the attorney Jeff on, you know, through the Planning Commission, now coming to council, really, the only element that's gonna change as a result of the zoning ordinance is the land use element. So I can say that right now. The other ones are, you know, the Old Town specific plan is not, it's not, it's something significant. But the land use element, we're changing some designations and some language and some texts. But other than that, that's really the main element as part of the zoning ordinance, that you'll see that will be amended as part of the update.
That's great. And I'd like to see what the funding mechanisms are that come from the general plan, because there are some things where developers come in and they move forward, and then we come back. We've had staff, previous staff members that have been working in planning and building, and they had a different direction, or they, it seemed like there was a different direction. And we'd like to, if we're gonna be and actually project that we're business friendly, then we need to make sure that it starts from the general plan and steps through the planning and the building part, which you're the man right there, Brian, okay? So we're trying to help also, okay? So basically, instead of saying no, we're looking to say yes where appropriate, where it makes a difference. As far as elements, maybe you could give me a brief, or maybe give the council a brief insight in projected costs, you know? It may be just a pie in the sky number there, but it's not free, I'm thinking, as far as cost-wise, to change an element, or what do you project some of these costs could be, okay? And is there limitations on how many elements that we'd wanna look at as far as changes? Is it one, two, or three?
I think just to be on the conservative side, conservative side, I would like to outline that in the staff report, because without having a consultant to talk to, and without knowing what exactly is proposed to change, it's very, very difficult to say what those costs would be. We do have consultants that are basically at our disposal, I can kind of bounce ideas off them, and then put that in the staff report. But basically, the direction you give us, where that amendment will be, will really determine the amount of staff time and budget that will be needed. So I'm just very conservative on that.
No, thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you on this, okay? So moving forward, thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other feedbacks, concerns, or anything we would like to add to the direction that we have given to staff about coming back to us with this? Is that enough feedback for you?
I think that is, yeah. Looks like we'll be coming back in March, and we'll, in February, we will look at the zoning ordinance, and then I'll work with the city manager.
And us as individual council members are to go through the general plan and potentially prioritize the elements we'd like to see changes in, and provide that to the city manager to then work with Mr. Halverson on creating a priority list.
Yes, absolutely. And I'm looking forward to councilmember Cordova, as far as, you know, getting the general plan, having some fresh eyes, and I'm available for any meetings or anything you'd like to talk about and any history, because I know it's a big document. So look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next staff presentation is administration and police department staff to provide a status update on the cleanup efforts in the San Ynez Riverbed.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a request before we start. I'm gonna set this up, and I'm gonna let the people that really did the work talk. Normally, we don't have public comment at a presentation, but there are some business owners and some folks that helped us with this project. Would it be, could they have some comment afterwards, and say what they feel about what we did?
I absolutely support. I think council would like to hear from the community, so we welcome input.
Great, thank you. So first off, Sergeant Martin is gonna get this, get it spooled up, right? What we want to do is come back and say, here's our update, you know, and we did some before and after stuff we want to show, and just kind of highlight the work that's been done, not only by staff, but all of our county partners and nonprofits, some that are here today. Really, first off, you guys should take a bow yourselves, because you had the vision and the leadership to say, let's do this. And it costs a lot of money to do this, we understand that. But we got our river back, and it's beautiful. So all I will say to the public is, it's your river. Get down there, take your dogs, take your horses out, and get back in the river, because it's, you're about to see, it's beautiful. Kevin Martin is a sergeant that spearheaded this. Officer Calderon is really the hero in this story, and he's still doing the homeless liaison work. Kristi Alarcon is the one that kind of managed and wrangled all the partners, and still is to this day. Work still is being done for homeless that are still out on the street. And Stacy Lawson is obviously, she's here to talk about any of the cleanup part, she's done the cleanup part. So I'm gonna step out of the way and let Kevin Martin do his thing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. The first thing I want to say is that there is no way that the Lompoc Police Department could have done this by themselves. Just couldn't happen. This was a partnership of numerous entities within the community, outside of the community, including the county, that put this all together. We had a big portion of it, but it took teamwork to make this happen. So I'm gonna start the slideshow. The first slide that you're gonna see is a video that we took when we first went down into the riverbed. This is, to give you an idea where it's at, it's Riverside Drive, right at about Oak Street. And you can see the trash that has just lined the riverbed here. And what you have to keep in mind is that there is a trail that extends from that structure you see there, all along this route that we're driving right now. And it is just absolutely piled with trash in that path. There were numerous, numerous people living in this area, and they are the ones that are responsible for bringing all of this trash down. So as you watch this video, keep in mind that you're not seeing everything that has been brought into the riverbed. You know, a big portion of this cleanup was the biohazard aspect of it, the human waste, animal waste, the needles, all the things that were a challenge. And one of the reasons why I personally was against this being a volunteer corps going down and cleaning up, because of the dangers associated, especially with the needles and things that were in the riverbed. So phase one of this project started July 2018. Chief Walsh created the homeless liaison officer position. He selected Mauricio Calderon, and I couldn't ask for a better officer to do this. Mauricio's got close to 20 years on, he's got the knowledge and wisdom to be compassionate to the people living in those conditions, but also the knowledge and experience to be able to say, hey, we're done. Now you're crossing some lines, and we're gonna have to look at this in a different manner. So he was a perfect fit for this role. His initial responsibilities were to partner with our nonprofit groups in the community that were already out in the riverbed, working with the homeless. Identify the homeless for us. The nonprofits had that knowledge, and with their work, but we needed to know as a police department. Help to improve the living conditions, if possible, of any of those people that were willing to take on a change, and identify and locate the campsites. One of the bigger pieces of his responsibility was, when you're dealing with the homeless, there can be long contacts, so, you know, working, trying to get resources, getting them health checked, things like that. So that became a big burden for a single officer on patrol, where we're already limited with our staffing. So having Officer Calderon available to go deal with that really helped both sides. Helped the homeless person, also helped the police department. Phase two of the project was July to August. We identified almost 110 members of the community residing in the riverbed. His challenge was to identify services they were eligible for, assist the nonprofits in obtaining those services, identify the criminal element and arrest when warranted. So you had a group of people living in the riverbed that were down on their luck, didn't do anything wrong, just couldn't afford to do anything else. But then you also had a criminal element that was down there for anonymity purposes, also to take advantage of the people living down there. So we're dealing with a lot of different moving parts of the homeless community down in the riverbed. So his challenge was also to deal with the criminal aspect of it. As well as notifying the people down there that, we hadn't picked a date at this point, but that that was coming. There was gonna be a time when we were not gonna allow people to continue to reside in the riverbed. Phase three of the project, the chief was able to purchase a four-seat Polaris, allowing us proper access. You'll see in the photos that I'm gonna show you, this is the last death by PowerPoint slide, for the most part, there's a couple more, but... We needed to have the ability to go down there and be safe. And there was a lot of issues down in the riverbed for a period of time, so with an officer going down there, you don't want to go by yourself, and we needed the ability to do that. I worked with our GIS department here, they were great, helped me identify the acreage needing to be addressed, it was approximately 750 acres, give or take. So for an officer's safety purpose, how do I send Officer Calderon down into an area of the riverbed? And if he needs help, how do we identify where he's at? So what we ended up doing is sectoring out the map, identifying some specific areas. And the one other thing that we did, and I'll show you this app, we created a Fulcrum smartphone app to map the campsites and any of the individuals using those sites, and to document what we were doing. And what Fulcrum is, and I'll show you that in just a minute, is a smartphone app that you can build your own app with. So we took that, we identified what our needs were, and we built it out, and you'll see the results of that here shortly. So this is the map that I got from GIS, and this is from our most current aerial imagery. The red dots that you see are the campsites that GIS could identify through the photograph itself, when the photograph was taken. This was no work that we had done at this point. So what we did is we broke down into areas of the riverbed, the wastewater, the airport band, the bike park, River Park, RV sites, and then South River. And then we broke those into smaller sections with numbers, so that if we were down in River Park Sector 1, anybody with the map would know a general area where we were, and they could come help us. This is a screenshot of the Fulcrum app, probably within a week, maybe two weeks of us going down into the riverbed, identifying the campsites. Each one of these red dots represents a campsite. Because I can't zoom in much easier, or closer to show you the areas, it's, you can see how congested some of these red areas are. Each one of those is a campsite, and obviously, the brighter red you get, that means there's a lot more camps there. So we did create the Fulcrum app, and this is what it looks like. You can see, it gives us a map area, it gives us the title, which is by default, the date and time of the activity. It updated to their server, the person that did it, and the time. And this next slide shows you, when you open up a report from Fulcrum, the area, this area here is the actual site, and then these are some of the photographs. This first one is before, and these photos are representation after the cleanup took place. This is a spreadsheet that Fulcrum gives us by logging into the website. So for purposes of documenting what we did, when we did it, where we did it, we have a spreadsheet of dates and times and everything that we did out there. This video is the after of the previous video I showed you. This is when cleaning took place. This was an amazing job. All the structures are gone, all the campsites are gone, just about every piece of trash is gone. It doesn't even look like the same place for us that have been down there working on this. It's amazing what this has transitioned into. What you see here are the willows that the city's project put in place to help deal with the deterioration of the wall of the riverbed should water fill up. That was all put in after we took that first video. So you can see how much cleaning has gone on down there. And that's just one small area of what we were dealing with. This is north of Mervins. If you're familiar with Albertson Shopping Center, the old Mervins building, this is right actually next to Lamos, the pet supply store. This was the day that we started the eviction and then the biohazard cleanup. This is what it looks like today. So it's an amazing job. This is the same area on the opposite side of the overflow water basin. This was one person's campsite. Now, you have to understand that these people have drug and alcohol addiction problems. This is a result of that, and you can imagine that there were probably numerous needles and dangers inside of this campsite that, again, why we didn't want this to be a volunteer cleanup. This is what it looks like today. Same area, a different campsite. What it looks like today. This is another campsite further into the river. You can see how much effort has been placed into building these structures, and how to protect from other homeless people coming into your area, and the amount of trash that is brought, was brought down into the riverbed. This is what it looks like today. This is further south, getting close to actual, the bike park area, but in the riverbed itself. And that's what it looks like today. So as we look at these slides, yeah, the city has spent some large amounts of money on this, but what the result is, is we've removed a lot of the biohazard dangers, we removed a lot of the needle dangers, and we've gotten the trash out of that riverbed should the floods come. That's not gonna cause problems downstream. That's not gonna cause problems downstream. This is a video of the area just east of River Bend Park and the Bike Park. You can see all the trash, and again, the trees are actually hiding most of the trash. You're only seeing a very small portion of this. This area has probably a 20-foot circumference circle that was dug down maybe three or four feet, and was just full of trash that they were dumping into that. And then, again, multiple paths going in multiple directions, just lined with trash. Now, what I want you to pay attention to, this is the same area, but look at the bike path, and if you look at here to the top corner, you're gonna see something that I think just justifies the whole thing. People walking the path again, people feeling in the community that they can safely go down and use a resource that the city has put in place. This was about 10 o'clock in the morning. People are going back down there and feeling safe when they do it, and you don't see a camp anywhere. This is, this is an amazing feat for our city, for all the partners involved in this, to be almost six, seven months into this project and have the results that we're having right now. And we're gonna get into some slides here in just a second to show you some more of those results. This is the equipment that's made it possible. Not having any of the vehicles to get us into the riverbed has been a problem for years for the police department. We were able to do this now. The Polaris did not come from the general fund. We gave up a motorcycle to help us purchase the pickup truck. And that's, that's how we're able to do what we're doing, to, to affect the change that we've affected. This is a aerial shot of the triage center as it was getting towards closing of the triage center. We still had some of the homeless using the facilities, the triage center, and the resources that were there for them. So what are our numbers? Prior to our involvement, 100-plus people living in the riverbed. Homeless use of the triage center was at 69, it's actually 70, we'll explain that in a minute. But here are the numbers that have been successfully housed. Three permanent, three family reunification, 10 temporary housing, two temporary shelter, 10 emergency shelter, six drug, alcohol, and mental health treatment, 14 just left the city. Now, the transition camp required that the homeless use, using the services, they had to live in, if they were gonna live in the camp, they had to abide by minor rules. They were not very challenging rules. 14 of the campers failed to follow those rules, resulting in their leaving the camp for those violations. Two of the homeless actually violated California laws, which everyone was warned about before they came into the camp to reside, and we had to address those as law enforcement. So the number was 70. One client entered into detox and then an emergency shelter immediately, so, again, I, I don't know of any community that could have done what we've done, and the amount of time that we've done it in, and it really was about the partnerships. How much trash was removed? 462.31 tons, people. 924,000 pounds of trash. This is just one pile of that trash. 924,000 pounds. You know, I was trying to say, how do we, what do we relate that to, right? Is it a ship? You know, what is that? And the only thing I could really figure out is that equates to about two standard residential Moving forward, we need to continue the patrol of the riverbed by law enforcement. We need to continue management of the shrub growth and continued cleanup. The reason we have to continue the riverbed law enforcement action is the, the bottom bullet point. We're getting information from the Sheriff's Department that over 100 homeless are living south of Robinson's Bridge in the Sheriff's Department's jurisdiction. I don't know how accurate that is, that's coming from a contact in the Sheriff's Department, and they're trying to figure out now how they're going to have to deal with that. If we don't continue our enforcement activities, they're gonna repopulate what we've worked so hard to clean up and, and to avoid further problems down the road. The management of the shrub growth, if we can see the tents, it's easier for us as law enforcement to address the issue individually with each person that comes down there. And then there are gonna be those people that go into the riverbed overnight, there's also people that are not homeless, that are going down in the riverbed and dumping trash because they don't wanna pay fees at the dump, and we're, we're addressing all those kind of issues. So thank you to our partner agencies, Santa Barbara Public Health, County Sheriff, Public Defender's Office, Mental Health, Caltrans, Rape Crisis, Good Samaritan, AmeriCorps, Planting a Seed, Coast Valley Treatment, and Lompoc Federal Penitentiary for, I missed them on the bullet points, but they were a key part to this, because there was a small area of that, in the riverbed, that is their property that they helped us deal with. So it's been quite the, never in a million years, and when I entered into law enforcement, did I think that I would be doing what I'm doing, would have been doing for the last six months, but it is the world we live in, and, and we have to know that this is something that's not gonna end just because of what we've done now, that we have to, we have to continue moving forward, policing, and making sure that it does not repopulate.
So Stacy Lawson is here, Kristy Arkan is here, obviously Sergeant Oscar Mauricio Calderon is here, myself, if you have any questions, and, and obviously there's some folks that probably wanna give some comments as well.
Absolutely, but, but before we open the floor first, on behalf of all of council, thank you. Thank you for tackling the problem. I mean, being willing to come forward, identify it, and put a proposal together, and, and ask for our support, that, that took a lot. That was a big risk for anyone's career, much less the size it ended up being. So thank you for doing that. The community may not understand and appreciate the impact this has had on us, but, because they're only seeing the results, but this was a public health and safety issue first and foremost. Homelessness is a difficult issue to solve, it is an ongoing battle, and we will continue to address it, but this, we needed to, to, to clean it up and make it safe for all of our community, so thank you very much for doing that. We will start with Councilmember Mosby. Questions? Comments?
Just comments, you know, chief, thanks for stepping up in this. I know, you know, a year ago, it was boiling point, and, you know, shortly before that, I think there's many as four fatalities in the riverbed, I think, in a 12-month period?
Yes.
And I think it was, what, 17 or 19 fires we'd had in there in a 12-month period? So I mean, maybe there's two more statistics to add that aren't happening.
Oh, yeah.
It's huge, so I mean, I mean, that was a significant reason for my stepping up, is that we had to say no. And, and you guys have done a great job, and I don't, you know, let's, you know, keep it together, and, you know, the bodies that were being found down the riverbed, it was, you know, it was wild. It was, it was worse than the Wild, Wild West down there, for sure. So thank you guys for taking care of that one with minimal, minimal amount of rebuttal from the, I think you called them the Prius drivers way back then, I think about a year ago.
Those were my words.
No, I think you actually, but anyhow, you did a really good job, and I think, I think they've given you significant kudos as well.
Well, you know, we, I think Lompoc did it the right way. We had our partners with us, the, the app that documents everything we did is, it's kinda irrefutable. And you know what, we, we could be here a long time tonight, but just let me tell you one story. We knew there was women being trafficked in the riverbed, and just so you know, one of them got into drug treatment, a very long, two-month one, is reunited with her husband and children, sober, happy, and leading a normal life. If that was the only person we helped, we did our jobs, but we, I think we helped a lot more people. You know, and, and Shondell Malcolm's here, and, and Jeff is here, and, and Brian Halterman's usually here, they, they are saints in my book, and really, thank you for the kudos for the staff, but without them, we couldn't have done this.
I guess, how do you really put the price? That was one of the things I said, of, of the human life, and what's going down there, and you know, that's really, yeah, we've got, we've got a bill we have to pay, and hopefully we can get some support, but, you know, the amount of human life, that was, is huge.
Well, the one video was Jordan Cunningham, so feel free to call him.
I will.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, that kinda leads into where I was gonna go. Mr. Throop, I guess the question here is, we just renewed an emergency declaration again. Do we continue the declaration until what point? And then the other question here is, is anybody rogered up any dollars on this, or are we gonna just fade away, the resolution is gonna go away, and we're gonna burden the whole cost?
No, that's, that is a good question. No, we'll, we'll continue it, I guess, probably maybe one more month. We're looking at finishing up. We've, we've expended everything, give or take a couple pennies here or there, on what was approved by the council. We are actually working on invoicing the county right now for what I consider, excuse me, their, their share of the process. The other piece is, we're still trying to reach out and get some contact from, or some response from the federal and the state. I've been, I'm trying to remember which, which congressional person for the state, it was, I think it was maybe Cunningham's office, yes. They had some ability in Sacramento to be given some funding to clean up their downtown area, or wherever it was in the downtown Sacramento area. So we were reaching out to them, saying, well, if they had $400,000, where did that come from? So we were continuing to reach out. The declaration piece will probably end as, now we're getting into the, the season where we cannot do more work because of the nesting and everything, but we are reaching out. The, the county is, is essentially going to be receiving our invoices on what we think should be their fair share of the project. The other part will then continue to reach out and hope to get something from state or federal. We're trying on that. And can I say one more thing, too? It's just different, I, I, again, I came in right when this was starting, and started my job here. The plan was already in place, it was a very, very good plan, this, everybody, all the departments worked well together, all our public agencies outside of the city worked well together. And what I'm leading up to is there, it, to me, it speaks volumes for the city. I know when I was up the road a little bit, and I can't remember how far back, but we, the city up north, we had a strategic plan, and I remember the city of Lompoc saying, we should do something like that. Tables have flipped. The people up in the Paso area have now said, what did Lompoc do? We need to do what they did. We need to talk to the people down there, and it, it really gets to me, because it's like, we're doing something that other cities in the Central Coast, as well up and down, they wanna use our model, so I think it does go to everyone on the team, that they did an exceptional job, it was well thought through, and now other people, other cities are saying, we need to talk to Lompoc and figure out what they did and how they were so successful. So I think that's a big pat on our back.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank everybody for an outstanding job, all of you, Shondell, everybody, all the, Pastor Brian, everyone that was involved there, and the police department, and all the public safety, people that were there to help clean up our riverbed and, and offer these people the compassion and a better chance at life, you know, by the people that did accept the help that was available. To the city manager and the city attorney, it seems like if the county doesn't step up to the plate, and you can invoice, and you invoice, and you get no response, it seems like it's prudent for us to look forward and see jurisdiction-wise, what we can do to shore that up again, to, to make sure this doesn't happen again. Is it annexation? Is it something that where you give back? Or what do we do so we're not stuck with this again? Because it could happen again. I mean...
It, it, it could happen again. That's, as Sergeant Martin said, we do need to make sure we go forward and continue what we're doing, otherwise, we're gonna go back to where it was. It might take a couple years to look that bad again, but it will eventually get there. So in the new budget, we will have some new expenses that we think should go forward, how we're gonna fund them is another question, but it'll be the patrols, it'll be the continued cleanup. For the other portion of it, the costs, if, if we have no response or a unfavorable response, you know, my goal is to then go down to the county itself, not just send them a, an actual invoice, but, you know, stand up at one of the meetings and say, look, we're all partners in this. We had a partnership for the triage center, but it also needed to expand in my, expand in my event opinion to the actual cleanup, because there is a crossover. We own the property, it's in the jurisdiction of the county, a lot of the people living there are not Lompoc residents, they're from way out of town, so we're burdened with that cost, so I think it's, I'm not gonna give up, let's put it that way.
No, I just think it's, it's prudent for our, for our sake to go and clarify what the boundaries are and find out in the future, if they're gonna step up to the plate or if they're not, so that we can know, instead of having to send them an invoice without any response. So thank you, appreciate it.
Before we wrap this up, if there's community members, business community members, anyone, partners who would like to speak to council and the public and share insight, please.
I'll step out of the way, but I've just, I forgot, Mark Oshmoll is sitting right here, he ran the triage center, he's going straight to heaven for that.
Thank you. So if there's any, anyone from the public who would like to share, please come forward and, and share your, your insight, appreciation, or concerns.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Mike Lemus, from Lemus, Lemus Feeding Pet Supply, and we're neighbors to this mess, and been here, been here 23 years, as a matter of fact, in that same location, and the last few years have been the most challenging, make no mistake. I would, I'd like to thank the council and, and for, for the insight, for making the resolution of this situation, and, and understanding the magnitude of what was there prior to anything gone. Chief Walsh and the Lompoc Police Department handled everything in such a professional manner, and the integrity that the officers and everyone showed, and the responsiveness of, of all of it, and the patience, dealing with some very difficult situations and, and people, so I applaud them for that. Many mornings, we'd show up to work there, and there'd be people pass, not people, two or three people passed out on the, on the sidewalk, sitting behind the building, defecating, urinating on the side of the building, gallons of bleach and, and fine salt, we poured out there to mute the odors. They broke off our lock to our roof access, got up on there, and we found out about it. I don't know how long they were up there, but they, they were utilizing our electricity, there was a hot plate up there, a lamp, you know, their cell phones were charging, so, and I have no idea how long they were there, but once we figured it out, and we put a shield more so, and, and two locks on it, and eliminated that. But as, as the chief spoke about fires and stuff in that, in the riverbed, I feel fortunate that we didn't have that, that situation with that cooked up stove up on the, up on the roof. Cars in and out, all, all hours, the night and day. Drug paraphernalia every morning, with, you know, it was a process, we had to, it was alcohol and bottles and cans, and a lot of cleanup on a daily basis. Graffiti, three or four times a week, we, we addressed that. More than once, there was a gal, barefoot and topless, coming across the parking lot. In, in, where we, where our building is, there's a yogurt shop, as you well know, and so there's a lot of kids and, and, you know, a lot of young people in there. This wasn't a very good site for them. Lot of vulgar language, F-bombs flying, and a lot of confrontation, we, you know, there was, there was people stealing, shoplifting was going on, and the confrontation with that wasn't, that we, the people that we caught wasn't, wasn't pretty, but I'm not worried about making people pretty. Our staff just didn't feel safe when they were walking to the cars, especially in the shorter time of the year, and dark, and when it's dark. We installed security cameras in the outside perimeter, and that's, that's, with, with the homeless thing, everyone gone, we'd still had some graffiti on the outside of the building, we installed these security cameras, lights, so we haven't had any of that whatsoever. So that's, that's been an asset. I wanna thank the city of Lompoc, the police department, and, and the, the council, and especially Chief Walsh and, and, and his crew, and for doing a great job in making all this happen, but thank you.
Mayor, City Council Members, City of Lompoc, I'm Darryl Tullis, and in my day job, I work for, I'm the navigator for United Way AmeriCorps, and we had a member, Kerry Page, that worked the triage center. And a lot of the question that have, that have, that has arisen since that is what's next. And one of the things that's next, a really big thing, is we've got a, what we've called a point-in-time count, that's coming up on the 24th of this month. And we've got training for it tomorrow night at the VFW at 6:00, and we've got our last training for it will be on the 22nd at 6:00 at the VFW. We need volunteers, and this is gonna be going on in the whole county, we're going to be going out and counting all of the homeless. And, and the reason we're doing this is, as we're just talking about, funding, by us giving the accurate numbers, we- the accurate numbers, we get funding for the United Way to actually put, to get all these groups together, Good Sam, and all these different groups that we're talking about, the nonprofit groups, to go out and be able to help the homeless and possibly get them housed. So we need, the county needs 475 volunteers. And right now, we're over 300, excuse me, but here in Lompoc, we needed 75, and we're at about 40. So we need, we need about 35 more volunteers. And on the 24th, we'll be going out at 5:30 in the morning to go out until about 8:30 to count all the homeless. So please, I've got, my website is www.livunitedsbc.org. If you can go on there to volunteer, to sign up, we need your help, and it's going, and it's going to help our community. So that's our next step. Count them so we can get funding to help the ones that are still here get housed.
Thank you.
And one last thing, it was a very amazing job that was done. I remember when Sergeant Cordova came out that first day, and we took him out and showed him the different sites. And it was amazing for us, too, because some of the places we hadn't, I hadn't gone yet, that was one of my first assignments, was to go down there. So it is very amazing, and to see the difference now, absolutely amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Oshomala, community member. Yes, so I hope I go straight to heaven, but not tonight, please. Thank you. Thanks, chief. It was quite an experience. The triage was a collaboration of everyone, and I, you know, we pulled it off. We're a small town. This was a very scary thing when we first, when I first came to it. And, you know, just by the direction of our good Lord and all that were involved, Pastor Brian, I wish he was here, but it, I'm still seeing the results on a daily basis. Even yesterday, or the day before, when we had our, Ms. Gilda was, Cordova was brought into city council, I met someone outside who was at the triage, and they gave me an update on how they were doing, and they had been indoors for a while and had a job for a while, unfortunately, not at the time. But again, I'm seeing a lot of good things. Even the slideshow and the updates really couldn't bring up to what really this, what occurred from this event. I mean, we really got a lot out of it. For me, you know, some of the people that I worked with for many years in mental health were helped, so it was, it was a tremendous success. I hope to never do it again. But I hope we never have to do it again. I think as long as we keep up on the cleaning of the riverbed, this was, again, never a solution to homelessness. We still have a problem in this town, and there's still a lot of groups like planting a seed, and Kerry Page, that are doing a great job of communicating with them and trying to get them help. We have a home problem. We don't have enough homes, enough housing. Some would say, yes, I would like to see larger scale housing built of higher income, not low income housing. Those houses will then be filled with people moving up, and people like myself that own the 50s houses, will obviously lose a little bit of value, but low income housing is not the solution. More housing, obviously. What a tremendous effort by the police chief. I'm sorry to hear that he's leaving us. I've worked with our police chiefs in the past. He's been the one that's definitely worked with the community the most, obviously a big heart, did a great job, and I hope, it's our loss, but I hope it's his gain, and he enjoys his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, city councilmembers, community members. Name's Shondell Malcolm, director of planting a seed. I just wanted to come up and give a little bit more update on some of the things that have been happening in Lompoc with our homeless population. Some of the impacts that we've been having, and this is a collaborative effort, again, from the cleanup and just doing our outreach with all the agencies, that, you know, between Good Sam, United Way, AmeriCorps, myself, we have housed probably, actually this year we did, I think it's 50 individuals that were able to get housing that were formerly homeless. So that is a big improvement in this city. And like I said, I know that, for me, we've, we've been able to furnish the housing, but we would not be able to do that without the other partnering agencies, like I said, from Good Sam, from United Way, AmeriCorps, that were able to help out. And some of those individuals were individuals from the triage. Some of them are individuals that, again, we've been able to do outreach with in the riverbed. And then some of them are individuals that were just couch surfing, you know, going from place to place. But out of the, I believe the county, or sorry, Housing Authority administered 1,200 housing vouchers, we were in Lompoc, I believe we, we did 40, 40 or 50 housing vouchers for Lompoc, and like I said, we've been able to furnish 47 of them. So again, just thank you, thank you to the community for the support, and, you know, just, we hope this continues.
Thank you again to all the partners and to everyone who's committed to seeing progress made for those less fortunate in our community, and for cleaning up the riverbed. And again, it's, it was a community effort, and I think it's a really beautiful reflection of what our community is capable of. So thank you to everyone involved, and for those that are definitely want to be a part of the solution, it's very important that we participate in the point in time. So thank you for bringing that information forward, and do consider signing up. It's one morning, from 5:00 to 8:30 in the morning, and it is cold and wet, but you get out and you get to connect, and you get to identify, and those numbers make a difference in the kind of funding that comes forward in our community to help all these partners solve these problems. Thank you for all those presentations. We'll move back to the agenda, and we'll open it up for oral communications, three minutes. This can be on any item related to city issues, city concerns. Please come forward.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. The library should have remained open during the school holiday break. I went, I was real disappointed. If I had a couple of kids, I would have been even more disappointed. Budget challenges should be met with the least effect on citizens. Those who make decisions to harm citizen services first don't understand their roles, duties, or obligations to citizens. Some staff labored to make the archived city council meetings very difficult to find. In the past, there was a page with a template that had meeting date, agenda, minutes, and video. It was simple, very efficient, even I could use it, to find just what you're looking for. That's been removed. When you get a chance, try to find a specific video. I had to come here, and a staff person was very nice and helpful, but she had difficulty finding it as well. Whoever works to keep city business in the dark doesn't understand their role, duties, or obligation to citizens. Despite the city budget increasing over 50%, adjusted for inflation over the last 20 years, we are so strapped for revenue, it shows in the physical appearance of our city streets and buildings. We are told Lompoc has a lot of commuters, but few businesses. We're told if houses are built, who could buy them? Volunteers are recruited to fix our parks. I was surprised to find this full-page photo and story featuring a winery in Lompoc in the Wall Street Journal. Full page, wealth and management section. I was very surprised. This winery, on the wealth and management front page of the Wall Street Journal in December, is in a paper that's read and revered by people all over the world. I later learned the Pinot from the Santa Rita Hills is rated in the top 1% of Pinot wineries in the entire world. Huge deal. Which led me to take a quick look at local industry outside of wine and agriculture. The space exploration and commercialization is exploding at Vandenberg. United Launch Alliance, NASA, SpaceX, Northrop Grumman, World Minerals, a subsidiary of Paris, France, is in Lompoc. ASRC, Federal Holding Company for Space and Defense. Vandenberg, of course, personnel. Lompoc Valley Medical Center, Denmat, Home Depot, all the elements are right here for success, businesses, climate, location, and people. With the right personnel in place, we can remove the chokehold on Lompoc. The Wall Street Journal sees the potential.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, member of the public, mayor. One year ago today, our former city attorney came and announced that the referendum to ban the ordinance which passed, 164017, failed one year ago today. And in that one year, there's been a lot of work that's been done concerning cannabis here in the city, both here in the local government and on the private side for businesses that are coming in. I know that we have 26 cannabis applications that are in at the city, and I think that's an amazing number to hear. But I don't look at it as 26 cannabis businesses that are coming in here. I look at it as 26 businesses that are coming into Lompoc. 26 businesses that have gone through a grueling process, and are continuing to still, some of them go through a grueling process, to go through background checks and a number of checks and balances that have been created with regulation and legalization of cannabis. And I'd like to thank the city council for taking the courage, for having the courage to move forward with legalizing and regulating cannabis in this city. And I understand that there are citizens still today who question what we're doing here as a city. The decisions that have been made, I know that some people are still questioning those decisions, and it will, it seems like it's going to forever be a looming question of what will happen, what could happen, shoulda, coulda, wouldas, and so forth. I'm happy to say that in one year since the referendum has failed, that we haven't seen any shootouts in the streets concerning cannabis, we haven't seen any stabbings in the street concerning cannabis. We've seen some thefts, I know, because I've been a victim of one of them. The Grinch that stole cannabis decided to come to my house a couple days before Christmas. So I do know that there is a commodity that is worth something. And if tomatoes are worth $1,000 a pound, believe me, your tomatoes would be gone out of your yard as well. It's been a long time since someone could say that 26 businesses want to come in here and be a part of the city. They want to pay fees, they want to collect taxes, they want to bring jobs, they want to bring much-needed things that we need in this city. I think the last time that we had a boom like this, the space shuttle was sitting off of Space Launch Complex Six. It's been quite a while. So I'm very thankful for what the city's done. I'm very thankful that the departments have moved this process along quickly, that licenses are being issued, and that on Friday, the first cannabis business is going to open here in the city of Lompoc, and that's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, Lynn Widdamore. January the 9th, I had the pleasure of having to replace my hot water heater. A good friend of mine that's in the business has a truck, so I said, please bring me one. After him being at my house for a short period of time, my neighbor calls me and said, there's someone walking back and forth in front of his house for the last 15 minutes. Go see what it is. So I go over there, and it's a city car. And the guy says, I said, identified myself and told him that my neighbor called, and he says, oh, I'm just stuck in the concrete here. I looked down, I see where the city had ground it down about five years ago, and I thought, okay. And after talking for a few minutes, he says, I see you got a plumber truck. What are you doing? I said, replacing my hot water heater. He said, you got a permit? I said, no. He said, do you have to have a permit? I said, that's a bunch of bull. He says, you don't have a permit? I will shut that down. He reaches into his car and pulls out a red card. So I go in the house, tell my wife I'm going to the city to buy a permit. I come down here, he leaves after, my house after I do, and he beats me to your city office. He's greeting me at the counter. When I get back, my friend was still there, fortunately, and he says, you know, that guy followed me here, which would be over 20 blocks from his business to my house. Now that's being sleazy. If it was criminal, you'd call it stalking. That's not the way to represent the city. That man's name is Seth Defler. He's not a good representative. I must tell you that the person that came to do my inspection was far better...
I'd appreciate you not naming names and addressing names to the city manager directly, because this is not a place to malign individual employees. I understand you mentioning the position and the concern, but to name a specific name is not respectful, and I would appreciate...
You're right, it was not respectful to me either.
I understand your concern.
This man said, you know, I have 10 years on law enforcement. What is that? You're trying to intimidate me? That had no place there either. The inspector that came to sign off, very nice young man. The only fault he could find, I needed a plumbing tee on my gas line to catch debris. When he came out there to inspect it, I said, you know, there's a filter on that. He said, there is? I didn't know that. And there's the rub. To be a building inspector, you used to have 25, 30 years in the construction world. Now you just have to come here to the city and ask for a job. They don't have enough experience to do a good job. There are many ways to do it. If the book says use Plan A, you can still use Plan B, or C, or D, because they all work. We need people that are knowledgeable and respectable and respective to the citizens of this town to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the public to remember that, when you come forward and have an issue with a very particular employee, the best way to address it is to start with our city manager. He is responsible for our employees, and so please start there. If you come forward to council with an issue regarding a department, it would be helpful to not name names and target specific individuals as a way to build relationships, rather than bring the anger directly to us. Please pick up the phone, start with one of us as an individual, start with the city manager. I understand your concerns, I understand your frustrations, and I'm sorry that you've had this experience. Please reach out to us and start there first, and I'm sorry that you had this experience, and we'll work on improving that. And the city manager and any of us are available to have those discussions and address those issues sooner rather than later. Thank you. Will continue public comment?
I just want to toss in here real quickly that it's kind of an imbalance, because if we have citizens come up and say something positive about somebody, it's okay. But if we're going to be negative, it's not okay. So I don't want to infringe upon the public to say, that was bad.
And I agree. I'm not saying that, but I don't think it's fair to start with the negative and name an individual, rather than trying to solve the problem first before immediately lashing out. And that is a habit that are, myself included, have begun to do, is to lash out on the negative initially, rather than address it through proper channels. And I'm hoping to reestablish with the community that there are channels to address that that aren't just showing up at council. And that's what my encouragement is, is to open up those lines of communication to actually address the issues that we necessarily can't do from the podium or the dais. Please continue. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori McLean, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself. And I'm working with Gymnastics North. It's a local business that's been open since 1987. And the current owners, Gina and Deborah Johnson, are looking to retire, and so I'm looking to purchase their business. We are having an issue with our building because it's in a cannabis zone, so we are having to move our business. But we're looking to move it to I Street, and we're offering classes for all ages, and we're looking to expand the business, and we think that moving to the I Street location's actually going to be a benefit. And I just wanted to introduce myself and just be a member of the community, and just make myself known.
Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me for coming up again, but that really needs to be addressed with transparency.
I'm sorry, you've already come forward with your three minutes.
We need to hear from people that have these experiences. That's the chokehold on Lompoc.
I welcome the sharing of the experience. It's the manner in which it targets individuals that is disheartening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Charlotte. Gilda, it's nice to see you sitting in that seat. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. And council member Vega, your mother cut my grandson's hair, and she did an excellent job. Just wanted to put that out there. I just want to kind of piggyback on something that you just mentioned because there is a way to do things, which is following chain of command. I agree with what you just mentioned, making a phone call, coming in and speaking to someone on a one-on-one individual basis. If your problem does not get solved, come in here and have that discussion. The first thing I wanted to mention, that I wanted to discuss rent control. And this is if there is any way possible that we can find a way to cap off rent, because many people are struggling being in their position with what they're trying to accomplish by working, earning a living, and also having family to deal with and trying to make ends meet. So that would be a question that I would like to ask. I don't know if anyone has an answer for that tonight, but many are in today's time. The second thing I wanted to say was, back in 2012, when I returned back to Lompoc, I transitioned back in with my job. I worked for Macy's Corporation, and things had kind of changed from what I had seen once I returned. So I'm just, I just want to kind of get a feel, I'm going to say it, blacks having jobs in this community. There are many, many blacks that are working at the base, that are working in Santa Maria. I work myself in Santa Maria. When I returned back here, I went through a temp agency, even though I was still employed with my company, but I didn't want to do the commute, so I wanted to find something here in Lompoc. Back when I used to live here some years ago, I seen where blacks did have jobs, and what I have found that in this community is, it's about who you know. But for the most part, I'm here to advocate for blacks. I know that when blacks go in and apply for positions, that they are discriminated against discreetly. And there's no proof, but we know. I myself, I am black, I am white, I am Puerto Rican, and I am Cherokee Indian. And I just wanted to, you to hear my voice.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charles Summer, resident. I hadn't planned on coming. I was listening to the radio on my way home, and I'm a little, I mean, I understand where you're coming from as far as not naming names, but to ask or force, you're not forcing the public, you're asking the public, I think that's censorship. And I don't, I think it was your voice mentioning, if you're going to say something positive, we want to reinforce that, but there are staff members in the city that might be out of bounds. If I knew her name, I would name her right now. My mother was approached with a certified letter and then approached in person. I feel my mother's being harassed, which is a criminal action by the wastewater department, trying to force her to get an apparatus that is not needed in her business. And I think that it's important that we don't censor the public. Yes, there is a decorum, there's a policy or a respectful way to go about communicating with staff, communicating with the city manager, communicating with the members on this dais. Some people don't do that. And if I was the gentleman that was talking about being stalked essentially and harassed for a water heater, I'd be livid. I'd be writing letters, I would find some way to figure out if there's any litigation I can go through, because that is harassment. And it's not the only case in this city. And from my mother's business, it's disappointing because a decision was made at this council, I think last month, to push something back to utility commission, and it seemed kind of odd, the morning before the utility commission meeting, not sure if it was on the agenda, she shows up to tell my mother she's going to be fined when there's no policy in place for fining businesses in that matter. And I was here at that meeting, and the city attorney, as long, as well as, or I don't want to speak out of term, I don't know if the city manager says anything, there is a way for the city to go after businesses that may be violating some sort of policy, and it's legal action. And if, unless they're going to go for legal action, stop coming to my mother's business, stop giving her threatening letters of fines that there's no policy on. And please, don't censor the public. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, John Lynn. You know, having sat in the center seat, I understand the predicament that we find ourselves in, but I don't ever recall gaveling down someone who was speaking about something I didn't like. I think I can recall several times when I was called a number of names, but it didn't occur to me that I would stifle someone. Clearly, we all would like to have the most respectful conversations that we can have, and I appreciate that, and surely the mayor saying that that's what we want to do is definitely the right thing. However, stopping someone from saying what they feel is correct is not. And, you know, the same thing happened to me when I mentioned former mayor Bob Lingle's name in a prior council meeting, and I thought, well, I'll just let that slide because it's, we're all new at this. But this evening, I think we went one step too far. Mayor, I appreciate you're trying to maintain decorum, but when people come to this podium, they have the right to say what they feel, as long as they don't become profane, and I would appreciate it if you would honor that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bring this thing back down after you finish. Once again, honorable mayor, city council, city of Lompoc, Darrell Tullis. I wasn't going to bring this up, but this has been brought up. And I called the police department a few weeks ago. In fact, the young lady that was here just a while ago had an issue, a situation on G Street where a house was raided, SWAT teams were out. They arrested several people that were in that house, and a few days later, and she lives a couple of doors down from there, a few days later, people had torn down the barrier that the police department had put up and had gone back into that house. And so she called me, and I called the police department, and I got the same type of attitude from the dispatch. When I called, I said, my name is Darrell Tullis, I'm calling because these people have broken back into that house. And I said, and I spoke to the chief about that house at the city council meeting that night, the night before. And I said, and I called in several times before then, and she had called in before, and nothing was done about it, and then finally, and this had gone on for months. And so when I mentioned it to the chief, he said, well, gosh, you know, please keep calling. I didn't know anything about that. And so when I spoke to the dispatch, dispatch, and I told her, would you please let the chief know that they're back in that house? And she says to me, oh, so I'm supposed to let the chief know because Darrell Tullis called in? I said, no. And I didn't say this to her, but I thought about it after, because I was kind of shocked, but I thought about it afterwards. I gave her my name because I've called in on calls before, and after I've talked to them momentarily, they've asked me, who's calling? What's your name? So I started out by saying my name's Darrell Tullis, not because I think Darrell Tullis means anything in that particular incident, but to be met with that kind of an attitude about something that anybody calls in for, a concern for this city, there are people that are working in this city that do things that are disrespectful to the citizens of this community. And so, and as far as black people getting jobs, you know what? When I retired from the Air Force back in 2001, I applied for jobs that I had done in the military with this city and never got a call back. Never got a call back. So I don't know whether that's because I'm black or not, whether they recognized my name, they might have recognized my dad's name, didn't like that, I don't know. But we can do better. We got to do better with, for each other, with each other, and anyway. We do have to be able to express ourselves.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? To clarify, you're absolutely right. There's no room for censorship. That is not my goal. I welcome every comment, every critique, every issue to be brought forward. My responsibility is for you to yell at me about my staff, yell at me about my council members, yell at me about my city manager. What I request is that if you have very particular issues, let's try and address them through channels that we can actually solve them. And council cannot necessarily address issues from the dais when they're expressed here, especially when they're very specific. And that's why I'm asking, that if you have very specific issues, that we try and follow a format that allows us to actually address those and start changing either the attitudes, the process, or the ordinances that are causing those. Please come forward, provide your insight, provide your issues, state the department you're having problems with. But again, naming particular names doesn't help us solve the problem from here, but it does help us if we sit down and have individual meetings with the city manager or with one of us or with the department heads. So this is about moving our community forward, and instead of just creating the conversation of something's wrong, finding a new path towards finding those solutions. So my apologies to the public if they felt I was trying to censor. That was not at all. I was elected on decorum and respect being brought back to the dais. So if I have shared that in any way of taking that away from you, my apologies. That was not my intent. My intent is to bring decorum and respect back to the discussion between council, city manager, staff, and the community, and open up those lines of communication, which this is a form of. So thank you for your input, thank you for your leaderships and your insights, and please continue to come forward and express concerns, but let's figure out a way to actually solve your problems that are healthier path. All right, back to our agenda, and we'll close oral communications. Our agenda items at the moment are appointment process. The first appointment that we need to put in place is mayor pro temp for a year or until another successor is chosen after that year. The position of mayor pro temp is acting mayor if I'm unable to be in this chair or I'm out of town and there's a event that needs representation by the council. It is a rotating position that we select each year. The prior history was in the council agenda, and I was mayor pro temp the year before. Council member Mosby was mayor pro temp in 2017. Council member Victor Vega was in 2016, and council member Starbuck was in 2015. The floor is open. I would like to make a suggestion and a request that we start the rotation anew, and council member Starbuck consider being mayor pro temp for 2018, and open it to the floor.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any comment? Okay? Okay, then let's vote for that. Five oh, that has passed, and our mayor pro temp for 2019 is council member Starbuck. Thank you. Our next appointments are for council appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees. There are several that have openings, and we have received applications for. The first one is for the airport commission. We have an at-large term ending in 1/2020. We have an at-large ending in 1/22, and we have an at-large ending in 1/2023. We have one applicant, David Hughes, who is a current member and would like to be reappointed. I will open the floor to nominations. Council member Mosby.
If I had a question for the city attorney. Is there any conflict of interest, the fact that Mr. Hughes has a business at the airport? This question was brought to me by a member of the public. The fact that he's not just renting a space, but actually conducting a large business at the airport.
It would be on an individual case-by-case basis, depending on what the airport commission is considering, because any decision about the airport that would have a financial effect on him, he would have to recuse himself. It may be that a lot of the airport commission's decisions may have a financial impact on him. So he may be recusing himself a lot, so that's something that you can consider, but I wouldn't go as far as to say he'll always have a conflict because it depends on what they're talking about.
Does the 500-foot rule come into play there? Just kidding, because it's all the same.
Council member Vega.
I'll make the motion that we approve, or appoint David Hughes, the airport commission.
And which term would you prefer, the 2023?
Yeah, that one works.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, vote? That passes 5-0. David, you have returned to the airport commission for three years. Beautification commission. We have a term ending 12/2020 for council member Cardova, council member Starbuck, and council member Vega. We currently have a single applicant, Warren Keller, and he has most recently served on the beautification commission and served as vice chair and wishes to return to the committee. I open the floor to any of the current members who have an applicant they need to appoint. Council member Vega.
I'll go ahead and appoint Mr. Keller for beautification commission.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Our next committee is the human services commission. We have three positions all ending in 2020, one for council member Cardova, one for council member Starbuck, and one for council member Vega. We have a single applicant, Pat Brady, who has put in her application. This commission is vital right now. They are going through applications to award financial support and need as many members as soon as possible to continue doing that in a fair and progressive manner. So I'll open the floor to any of those members that have an appointee. Council member Vega.
I'll go ahead and appoint Pat Brady for the human services commission.
Okay. I will go ahead and give you a second on that. Any discussion? Shall we vote? And that passes 5-0. The library commission has at-large positions open, two ending in 1/2022, and one term ending in 2021. We have two applicants, Marcella Barazza and Luella Knowles. Both have been currently serving on the library commission and wish to continue. We could make the motion to appoint both to the two terms ending in 1/2022, if that so pleases the council, and I'll take a second.
I'll second, definitely.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that is 5-0, passed, and welcome aboard. Parks and Rec Commission. It has a term, three actually, that end in 12/2020, one for Ms. Cardova, one for Mr. Starbuck, and one for Mr. Vega. We have two applicants, Jeannie Walker and Steve Bridge, both have been serving and are, want to continue serving on the Parks and Rec. Council member Starbuck.
I'd like to renominate Steve Bridge for the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll give you a second on that. And any discussion? Let's vote. It's 5-0 for Mr. Bridge. We have one applicant left. Would either of the, council member Vega?
I'll go ahead and reappoint Jeannie Walker for the Park and Recs Commission.
I'll second.
You have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Let's vote. And that passes five zero as well. And, public safety commission. We have three terms, each ending 12/20, one for council member Cordova, one for council member Starbuck, and one for council member Vega.
Mayor, I'm sorry. The terms are ending 2022 for council member Starbuck and council member Vega. All of their appointments are till the end of their terms.
Ah, so there was a misprint on one, and, okay. So, there's one term for council member Cordova that ends in 12/20, the terms for council member Starbuck and council member Vega each end in 2022. We have a, one applicant, Philip Galanders, who currently serves on and would like to return to that, and I will open the floor to council members. Council member Vega.
You know, I'd like to thank, I think I said Jeannie Walker, Jenny Walker, previously, for her previous service on the previous commission, and I'd like to reappoint, and also thank Mr. Galanders for his commitment through these past four years, I believe, on the public safety commission. So I'd happily vote to reappoint him on that public safety commission.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? I'll give you one. And, any discussion? Let's move to vote. And that is five zero. Utility commission. We have a term of two years till 2020 for Ms. Cordova. I have an appointment that ends in 2020, and then council member Starbuck and council member Vega each have a term ending in 2022. We have three applicants, Lee Bratman, Jerry Nyman, and Robert Holloway. Jerry Nyman and Robert Holloway currently serve and would like to continue. I'll go ahead and go first, I will nominate Lee Bratman to serve as my appointment, and would take a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll vote. That is five zero. Open the floor to nominations from any of the other council members. Council member Mosby.
Could I have a quick question for the city attorney? Commission positions, do they have to be district-related to the council member who's? No, they can be in at-large?
The commissioners appointed by a council member do not need to be from any district of the city.
Okay.
I mean, they need to be in the city, but they don't need to be in any particular district.
Okay.
Council member Vega.
I'd like to thank and reappoint Bob Holloway for the utility commission.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? And that passes five zero. We have two positions, one for council member Cordova at, ending in 2020, and one for council member Starbuck, ending in 2022, and we have one candidate remaining, and Jerry Nyman, who currently serves and would like to return. If anyone would like to consider that applicant? Council member Cordova.
I just want to say that I thank all that have been able to be on all of these committees and commissions, and thank you all for your service. I obviously have not had the opportunity to go through everyone, so I don't want anyone to think that me not voting, or me not requesting to appoint someone right now is because I don't approve of any of the candidates. But, I will go ahead and vote for Mr. Jerry Nyman, as since he has already been on that committee, and I feel that he, if he's wanting to come back to it, kudos to him for wanting to serve.
I'll second.
Okay. That is moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five zero. That is a position still available, so applications are still being accepted for that. The youth commission is our final commission to address for the city tonight. We have several positions open. We have three youth terms expiring in 2021, we have two youth terms expiring in 2020, we have an adult term expiring in 2021, and an adult term expiring in 2020, and one associate term expiring in 1/2021. We have two youth applicants, Isabel Hapell and Carla Penegua. They both currently serve and would like to return to service. We have Scott Batshell, who is the adult, one of the adults who currently serves and would like to return, and we have Beverly Kennedy, who's also an adult on the commission and would like to return. So, I would like to make a motion that the two youths, Isabel and Carla, be appointed to the term ending in 2021, and that Scott and Beverly be reappointed, with Scott taking the 2021, and Beverly taking the 2020 term, and make that as a motion as a whole, since they are at-large. And would look for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five zero. Thank you to all of you who are currently serving, for those of you desiring to serve and applying, and please check either with the city clerk or any of us regarding current open positions. Several of the committees and commissions still have open positions, and Ms. Cordova has a position on every committee that has a position associated with her name, except for the utilities commission. So, if you're interested in serving, please reach out to the city website, to the city clerk, or to any of us, and receive an application, submit it, and be brought forward as part of consideration, and encourage you to reach out and talk to us if you have any questions about serving on any of the city commissions. The next item of appointments is reviewing appointments of city council members to outside agencies. As council members and mayor, we serve on many boards and committees and commissions within the county, representing Lompoc and in other areas, and there is a list that we all run through every, every year, I believe we confirm it. This year, there is a great deal of change on councils, so what I would like to ask is that every council member currently serving on a committee or commission consider stepping down, so that we can change some of the roles we've been on, some of the terms that have been held for several years, and change it up, and open up some opportunities either to new council members, or to council members who haven't had a chance to serve on some of these. So, please take that into consideration as we move through this list. The first on our list is the community action commission. This actually isn't a appointment of a city council member, it is human service commissioner, who is a direct representation for the city of council, and I believe that the human service commission nominates that individual and brings it back to us for affirmation. So, after they have a full team, that will return to us. The second is liaison to the chamber of commerce board of directors. It's a ex officio, non-voting member, who will attend the city, the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce meetings, board meetings, at 7:30 a.m. the fourth Wednesdays of each month, and serve as a liaison from the city regarding what city issues are going on, and bring information back from the chamber. Currently, council member Dirk Starbuck is serving on that. I ask that if anybody else is interested in serving on that, that they throw their hat into the ring at the moment, and take consideration if there was anybody else who'd like to serve on that, before Dirk. Council member Cordova.
I would not mind serving on that.
Council member Cordova has asked to serve on that. Do we have a second?
Sure.
All right. Look at, you look getting rid of that one real quick. Any conversation, concerns, discussion? All right, let's vote. Five zero. Welcome aboard to our liaison to the chamber, and thank you so much for your service all these years on that board, Mr. Starbuck. The next is the electric utility joint powers agency with NCPA and tank. This is our role in representing the community as part of the joint powers authority and membership for our electrical service. Prior to this, Mayor Bob Lingle had served on it, and I had served as alternate. It is a very interesting and a very important role within our community, given the changing economics of electrical in our community, as we watch and see what's happening with PG&E and SoCal Edison. So, I am happy to step down from that role, and I actually would like to nominate council member Mosby to consider the role. I know you have a large interest in utilities, and I think your insight would be helpful on this, and so I would like to ask if you would consider being our liaison to NCPA this year.
I think it's important for you to continue on with that one, it's something that you went into, and the former mayor had escorted you into that position, and I think that's an important one, to keep representing our electric utility there as you are.
And I appreciate that. In turn, I was going to ask that you step down from SB CAG, because I would like to step up to that role. So, that is part of my negotiation with you here, is that I realize why Mayor Lingle chose the position, and why he stepped down from SB CAG, and I happily took the role of alternate as a way to educate myself, and I think it's really important that we rotate through many of these roles, and not have a singular responsibility all the time, and end up focusing so singular. So, that is my request, so.
And I will argue that point, because getting familiar, it's not about chance and rotation on this, this city needs true representation in the history and the background that I have about Lompoc. I think that that's one of the reasons why I should be still on SB CAG, is understanding the history and the nature of probably one of our biggest projects that we need to finalize, which is Robinson Bridge, and I'd hate to give up the successes that I have by advancing forward, the replacement of the bridge from 2038 to almost 2024 right now, and potentially even more, because of negotiations in moving forward with SB CAG staff, and I'd hate to lose ground when the traction we have moving forward with that. So I believe, just for the simple reason of somebody giving somebody a chance in rotating through, is not the proper reason to remove or advance somebody into another position in one of these assignments. I think if we're, we've got a goal that we're moving forward, and we're succeeding, I think we need to continue, so to say, riding that horse forward. So, I mean, granted, I can see why you would want to move forward on the SB CAG, but I would like to fight you for that position.
I understand that, and I would hope that it didn't matter who was representing Lompoc on SB CAG, that we would be able to continue moving that negotiation forward, given it is a negotiation with all of the county governments, and Lompoc's voice is just as strong, no matter who is representing it. And I feel that the advances you've made are very important, and I truly appreciate them, but I don't believe a changing of membership would inhibit the progress you have made. In fact, I hope to build on the progress you have made.
I would challenge you that with just this simple fact of historical knowledge of the developments and advancements of things that did happen and didn't happen with our roads and our highways of this community. So, I don't think it's just a random chance of advancing this way, but having read a significant amount of data and information on our historical advancements that did and didn't happen in our community, and it's just not a random chance that we are moving forward the way we are, so I would argue with you on that one.
I didn't call it random chance. I did agree that you have contributed, and I do appreciate the contribution. So, while I regret that you aren't willing to step away from that and switch up what you have been focusing on, I will concede that you may continue as our representation if council so supports it, but ask you to consider stepping down soon, so that we could transition through more than just one of us having the experience, and being able to learn more about what we need to do in the community, and bringing a different voice to that committee. There is a motion on the floor for council member Mosby to continue as representation of SB CAG, and a motion for me to remain as NCPA, and I will open it to the floor for discussion or support.
Mayor, may I, one quick one?
Sure.
One change on the tank part of it, the transmission agency of Northern California. In talking with Brad Wilkey, who was our, well, still is, the management services director, his recommendation was, under the one alternate commissioner, was to have Dean Albro switch up with Brad. As Brad transitions over to utilities, Dean would then take that over.
So, under tank, the alternate commissioner would be Dean Albro?
Yes.
Okay. And Brad would remain the staff liaison as listed?
Yes.
And then I would be the NCPA, and we would need an alternate for that. Well, you also need a council member alternate. So to wrap that up, if I remain and step up to being the commissioner, and staff is Brad Wilkey and Dean Albro for tank, we still need a council member who is the alternate. Council member Mosby.
An alternate for where are you feeling, which position?
NCPA. That was what the city manager brought to our attention. So you have a council commissioner, then you have an alternate council commissioner, and then you have staff and tank alternative commissioner from staff. So what is missing as part of this nomination is who is council alternative to me?
So, I'd be willing to take the alternate NCPA if you'd be willing to take the alternate SB CAG.
Absolutely.
So adding to your motion.
Okay. So that solves two of them.
Could I just toss in about air pollution control, because there are basically a concurrent meeting there also.
So you're suggesting that we continue in our current council roles of council member Mosby being the lead, and I be the alternate for?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion stands that I will be the commissioner for NCPA, that the alternate will be council member Mosby, that staff will be Brad Wilkey, that the tank alternative at NCPA is Dean Albro, that for Santa Barbara Air Pollution Control District, council member Mosby will continue, and I will become the alternate again, and at SB CAG, council member Mosby would be the lead, and I would continue, oh, I would become the alternate.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. So that takes care of those three. Then we have item six, which is BREEZ Political Advisory Committee, or PAC, reviews and approves inter-agency agreements, budgets, and service plans for the following year. Currently, council member Starbuck has been serving on that, they meet about once a year, and...
I'll trade for solid waste.
Council member Vega, might I suggest that you take the once-a-year meeting for the BREEZ Political Advisory Commission? It's a once-a-year meeting, come on.
Once a year. Could you repeat that?
I'll second that.
No, 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 just repeat it.
The BREEZ Political Committee, or PAC, reviews and approves inter-agency agreements, budgets, and service plans for the following year, meets at least once a year.
Is that solid waste?
No, that is BREEZ Political Advisory Committee. That's the bus.
I heard you, I got you. Okay.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
So, I heard a second, did I?
Well, while we got council member Vega on the hook, does he want to be the backup for solid waste again?
To continue being the backup?
No, thank you, no, thank you. I can't do it.
Shall we rope Ms. Cordova into that?
Absolutely.
All right, so, the nomination is, is that for BREEZ, we have Victor Vega serving, and then for number seven, which is the multi-jurisdictional solid waste task group, council member Starbuck has taken the lead, and our alternate will be Gilda Cordova. Seeing none, and once our city clerk finishes making notes and clears our voting board, we can vote. And that passes five zero. Madam clerk, am I moving too fast? Okay.
Um, it, Ms. Mayor, if I could bring up something, it's a little bit backtrack, but the community action commission, I wanted to go back to that real quick, if I could. I've been serving on it for...
That's...
Four years, but I mean, what I'm saying is, someone else can take lead on that, or you're gonna wait for a recommendation from human services, but I wanted to clarify, I don't think that anybody has noted that, but I'm willing to do a back... But I'm willing to do a backtrack if somebody else wants to do it or we can wait for a recommendation from the Human Services.
So I wasn't aware that you had been serving on that because...
Yeah, it's been a long time.
All right.
Four years.
So it's technically, you don't have to continue serving since the Human Service Commissioners can be appointed to serve that? So what we'll do is we'll note that you are stepping down and we'll connect with the Human Service Commission to see who their appointment will be. And if they don't nominate someone, we'll bring it back to council for discussion about who might serve?
Thank you.
Does that work?
Yes, that works.
Okay.
I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you. It wasn't in our notes, so I wasn't aware. So my apologies.
I think they had me down for Solid Waste, but that's about it.
Well, now you're down definitely for BREEZ, the buses. Okay. Back to number eight. This is listed as the Central Coast Collaboration on Homelessness. It has actually become Home for Good. Councilmember Mosby spent two years on it. I have spent two years on it. I will open the floor to anyone else who would like to serve on it. It has been really educational and important for Lompoc to remain at the table and discuss homeless issues, the funding for it, and how that is evolving. And it meets once a quarter. It recently has begun meeting in Bilton and it's in the morning. It's about two hours. And it's one of the ways we helped build several of the relationships with our nonprofit partners as we moved forward on the River Red cleanup. So I can highly recommend it and I would like to give someone else the opportunity to serve on that committee if they're interested. Are we having a stare down?
I'm just having a thought.
I will gladly serve on the Home for Good.
And I will serve as your alternate if you would like in the transition? All right. So the motion is for Gilda Cordova to serve as council liaison to Home for Good and for Janelle Osborne to continue as an alternate. The Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens Area... Oh, sorry. Yes, we need to vote. That was such a...
We need a second as well.
Oh, thank you for counting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dirk. You were very obviously eager to get that done. And I was so eager that we avoided a vote on it. Okay, let's vote. Five oh. All right. Really, we only have three to go. We're good. Commissions and committees. Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens Area Aging, Agency on Aging. Lompoc Valley Community Representative serves on the Board of Directors, which is comprised of six representatives from both Santa Barbara and Slow Counties. It meets the second Friday at 9:30 at various locations in Santa Maria. Hasn't met as often as they would like. The mayor served on that prior and has left it open. Anyone interested in meeting? Councilmember Starbuck.
The acronym NAVI is going into my head here, but I'll go ahead and do it.
Thank you. I will second that. Any discussion? Let's vote. Five oh. And that passes. The California Municipal Utilities Association, or CMA, Legislative Committee, given the role I have with NCPA and the issues that come up regarding that, I will happily continue as council. I just need an alternate and anyone volunteering to be an alternate? Anyone nominating an alternate?
Being that they're all jumping up and down, fighting for it, I'll take your alternate.
All right. Thank you. So the nomination is Janelle Osborne for representative and the alternate to be Jim Mosby. And I will give a second to that. Anybody else?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five zero. And the last one. The Santa Barbara County City Selection Committee is comprised of mayors from each city in the county. It ratifies appointments of city representatives to LAFC, APCD, and SB CAG. If the mayor is unable to attend, then the mayor is required to designate a member of the city council to attend. The mayors serve on this. I will serve and just need a second and a vote.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five zero. Now we have the added agenda item of considering how the city might assist in any way with those affected by the government shutdown, the federal employees locally affected by the shutdown, and if there is a utility repayment program that we should be considering or need to vote on utilizing.
Well, I don't have a staff report, but we're all aware that Democrats, Republicans, while the feds are doing a shutdown. So I was going to read through a couple of notes I have and see what you guys think. We're requesting that we have authority to grant a 30-day payment extension without charge for customers who satisfactorily demonstrate that they're federally employed and they're affected by the shutdown. We also ask that you give authority to utility billing to waive any penalties or assessments, or penalties, for everybody who's affected by the shutdown. We were hoping that we could make it from January 10th until February 12th. And that way, if we had to, we could extend it at that point in time.
Councilmember Starbuck.
A question, Mr. Albro. Is this something where if somebody is affected by it, they could come in and meet with somebody in Treasury and arrange a payment-type schedule or a deferral? Is that kind of what you were going at?
Yeah, basically, if they can just approve that they have the hardship, we're just going to extend them 30 days to, until they get this figured out. And then at that point in time, they'll either become, need to become current or enter into an agreement, just like everybody else.
Sounds fair.
Councilmember Mosby.
Isn't this something staff kind of already does? A little bit, something like this? Don't they go through and make payments for people who are in difficult situations?
If somebody had, like, they're unemployed, if they're in a, let's say, an employee and they get fired or something, they're in a hardship, they'd be able to apply for unemployment? These people right now don't have any option. They're just not getting paid.
I mean, but generally, right now, don't we do that if, you know, for businesses? We do something similar.
It's still have to enter into an agreement and they wouldn't be able to do that if they had no money coming in. So they wouldn't be able to make payments. So we're just hoping that we could just defer it.
But again, I was just talking about, we do something like this already, I believe, right?
We still charge interest or fees. I mean, we can do a payment arrangement or an extension of contract, but it doesn't waive any of the penalties or fees.
So would we be asking to do this and just waiving penalties and fees? Is that, so?
Yeah, exactly.
And delayed their payment for a month. We can't currently do that because that's not what in our, what's in our utility billing, rules and regulations.
Okay. Do we know how many people, by any chance? Do we have any idea? I mean...
Well, in the CAFR, I'm sorry. In the CAFR, I know we have, what, 500 and some at the prison and there's probably...
Yes, so we don't really know?
Twice as much, if not three times as much on the base.
But we don't know, we really don't.
We don't know how many people would live in the city and would be affected. We've been, we've had a number of people come up to utility billing and ask if they could ask for assistance or help. So that's why we thought we'd bring this special...
All right. So you weren't, you've already had an approach already?
Yeah, we've had a number of people saying, you know, can you help us out?
Okay.
Instead of giving them the shot off and cut them off, we thought we'd try and figure out something real quick.
All right. It answers a bunch. The city manager had something?
Yeah, I was going to say, I did receive an email from the prison and the, can't remember the gentleman's name, but he said there's approximately 300 people that have the ability to, he wasn't positive, but live in Lompoc that work for the prison. And he was wondering what the city could do to help them out because they are an essential employee, so they are working. They're not getting paid. They can't stop working. So I said we are going to be possibly discussing that tonight.
That'd be Justin Bender.
All right.
Glad it didn't work out there, but I know Thursday was their payday and they missed it.
All right. Well, thanks for a little more information. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Vega.
All right. I'm fully in favor of helping the federal employees defer their payments or give them some, something to work with. But another concern I have, I've received a call this evening from someone that's receiving benefits, SSI, Social Security and stuff. They're not federal employees, but they've received notices or someone has received a notice that if the shutdown extends to February 1st, that their benefits could be affected. If that in fact happens, we're going to be dealing with a lot more people that may not get their benefits to pay for their utilities. So I'd like to have that referenced or taken into consideration that if in fact that happens and it's somebody that receives cash benefits and they have a utility issues, we may be, we may be hearing about other hardships. You know, if that in fact, if the shutdown extends past February 1st. So I'm not sure if you guys are prepared to handle that influx or if you want to handle it individually. But there is a concern that that may happen.
City manager.
Oh, and just a quick Google. Sorry. It just said that, for instance, on Social Security, it said the offices will remain open and monthly checks will be, go out on time despite the partial shutdown. Retirees who depend on their monthly Social Security checks to make ends meet can breathe a sigh of relief.
No, I got you. And the article that I saw was actually for the people that are receiving benefits from the welfare and things like that. It's not just Social Security. And apparently, the article says if it extends past February 1st, they may not receive a check for their benefits. Not sure if you can find any information on that, Jim, or not.
I'm quick, but I'm not...
No, no, no. I mean, hey, I just wanted to bring it up, okay?
It does say funding would run out at the end of February for the food stamps and at the end of January for the temporary assistance for needing families. Can I?
So we're going to be stuck, or not stuck, but we're going to be helping or having to help other entities also with the utilities if they can't pay.
Councilmember Vega, if I could suggest that we have a council, we have a council meeting on February 5th, so we could put a placeholder item on that agenda for a status update on what's happened with this discount or deferment process and then also further talk about anything else we need to do.
Okay. I got you.
Any other questions, concerns? We'll open the floor to public comment. Since this is a newly added item, we should make sure we have public comment. Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Any further discussion? Or do we have a motion to accept staff's suggestion of January 10th through the 12th to contact the city and show that you are a federal employee and the utility fees will be held off? And once they are paid, they can come in and either bring it current or make arrangements for payment?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion and I'll make sure that it's without interest or penalties also. Correct?
That's correct.
Just for clarification.
I'll go ahead and second.
All right. Any other discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five zero. And I asked the city manager to contact anyone who's reached out to you and have our PIO make sure that information is distributed on that?
Yes, we will.
And what the process would be?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. So we will open up the floor to written communications. Anything received?
Nothing.
All right. It's missing from the agenda. We usually do a second oral communications for two minutes. So I will open the floor to any oral communications. Seeing none, I will close the floor and we will move back to council requests. And we'll start with Councilmember Mosby. Any council requests, comments, or meeting reports?
I have one council request. I think I made it several meetings back. I didn't have an opportunity to go back and re-review and then didn't get it in minutes. But with respect to the programming of the impact fees, AB 1600 for the park impact fees, when we had the discussion, I think it was about three months ago, I believe I made a council request that we come back and bring the programming of those numbers back to the council. And it's not on the future list and stuff. Again, my apologies for not going back and watching the meeting again, but I believe I made it, that request. If not, I'm making it now. If, but I think you remember me making that?
I remember something about that. I just, yeah, it did fall off.
Because it was my council request to have the diagrammed up there so we could see what we were doing, but...
Yeah, we'll get that, we will get that back.
Okay. So I don't need a second then, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Let's see. With that, I didn't attend any meetings at the expense of the city. Just would like to comment that our First Amendment right is, is a fragile one. It's an easy one to be taken away from us. I don't think we've reached that point here, but I understand what the mayor's saying. It just, there is a delicate balance between the two and I can understand when you come to the microphone and the passion that happens. And I can appreciate the willingness to come to the microphone and to speak your piece. Just like to say, if you feel so empowered that you must mention a name, I do believe that is your, your right to mention a name. But there are options. And I met with Ms. Whitmore in the past about issues. And I know he's a passionate person and I appreciate you coming, coming forward and expressing your concern. And I know that the city manager did hear your comments. So it's just, we need to be delicate on that. We just don't need to be infringing on the First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
I have a council request that was previously, with the previous mayor, I was on an ad hoc committee with a building, to try to build an alliance with the Schumash people. And we only had one meeting. And I'd like to reinstate that ad hoc committee. I do have an interest in remaining on a committee that was moving forward. And I was on there with the previous mayor, so I'm not sure if we'd like to move forward with that, with either the mayor or somebody else, so that we can remain. I think it's very important keeping the alliance alive between the Schumash as far as being business-friendly. And I think there's great accomplishments that can be made moving forward with people that have a vested interest here. Since the last time they came over here and did a presentation, it was said that they had 37% of their employees that live in Lompoc. I think we can use that to our benefit and their benefit also.
Absolutely. I appreciate you reminding us of that and I'd be happy to, to serve on that. If we need to agendize it to bring it back and make it official, I'll give you a second and we just need a, a third?
I'll give you a third.
Okay. So please bring back Councilmember Vega's request to revisit the ad hoc with the Schumash and the membership.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
My council request has to do with my recent appointment. When I went back and started kind of looking, I need, I have a lot of catch-up to do, due diligence or homework, if you will. And as a matter of fact, and today in my brief meeting with Mr. Throop, I was able to ask him, you know, how does one go back and get information? And then I noticed there was a public, or there was a local resident that brought that up also in today's meeting. And I don't know, I've been present in council meetings before where someone mentioned something about, you know, transparency and us wanting to have information readily available. So I don't know if that's a discussion that needs to be had about how do people go back and get that information? Or someone like me, who is new to the council and needs to ramp up fairly quickly, be able to get that information also without having to go and ask or jump through hoops or, you know, do my own research? So I'm not sure what that would be, but...
I think that would be a great idea is to have staff come back with a presentation on how to find information, how the transition is going with our website. Because I know that, that without a webmaster to manage that transition, it's, it's fallen to some of the department heads to get some of that up to date. So I'll give you a second on that and would look for a third to support it.
And I...
I can put a third.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just going to add that I know the, the resident that was here, she mentioned that it used to be like a very easy way you would put in a reference or a time or, or whatnot. And if that was removed, I guess that makes it very difficult for people to go back and...
make that correlation or get that finding of what it is that they're looking for, myself included. So, being able to have that easy configuration for people to be able to do that, that would build huge, I think, with our public, to be able to have that transparency that we're all talking about up here.
Councilmember Vega.
If I could add on to that, to the city manager, previously, we had a deputy city manager that was in position that was a great help, also providing information without disturbing sometimes the department heads, and that's not what Gilda's talking, she's talking about, you know, e-commerce and access that way, but I thought I'd add that, you know, to find out what a protocol would be, so that we're not taking so much staff time when, when there's times that we may just be able to do a request, or do we just come to you, Jim, you know?
Yeah, we have lost a few people, so at the moment, I'd say just come to me, email me, come in, talk to me, and I'll figure out who the best person would be at that point.
Thank you.
Did I have a third for Councilmember Cordova's request?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you have the three for that. Is that it? Okay. I thank the committee member, no, community member and participant with United Way for mentioning the 2019 homeless point in time. It is Thursday, January 24th, from 5:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. Sign up can be done at liveunitedSBC.org, or you can download their Counting Us app and register there. It's available on Google Play in the App Store. As you mentioned, training is available on the 16th at 6:00 p.m. at the VFW in Lompoc, and also on the 22nd at 6:00 p.m. You can arrive there and register there. It's, again, a really important thing we need to do in the community in order to make sure we get the appropriate funding. The Food Bank has added two distribution dates for federal employees affected by the shutdown. One is tomorrow, the 16th, and the other is Friday, the 18th. That will be from 1:00 to 2:30 at the First United Methodist Church at 925 North F Street. You do not need any ID to collect, and immediate family can do the pickup. The last thing the community might want to attend is the MLK Day Celebration is Monday, 11 to 2, at El Camino, and our city offices are closed for that day as well, so I invite the community to come out and remember and embrace the concerns and the movement that Martin Luther King brought forward. I, again, apologize to the community if they felt I overstepped and was asking you to censor yourself. Again, looking to rise above it all and show that we can have decorum and respect for each other, and also make progress and change the way we are treating each other, treating our citizens, and better reflect the community, much like we did with how we cleaned up the riverbed. Thank you. We'll adjourn to Lompoc City Council meeting, regular meeting, at 6:30 p.m. on February 5th, 2019.